At this time, I'd ask you to please stand. Reverend William will give us indication. Remain standing far placed to the flag.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, enable us to pause long enough to see the meaning and purpose of the duties of a public sermon. Help us to see the greater need of your divine presence. Let us take notice to the measure of our deeds and be certain that we will have to give account for our deeds. Give to our wills direction and constraint, that we may serve according to your will and plan that will bring fruition to all that we do for the benefit of those whom we represent. Inspire us to be constant and consistent in our efforts as we go about providing governance for all the people of Goldsboro. Bless our workforce, our citizens, our state, our nation, and all nations. We ask this in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll ask a hard-working city clerk to have a roll call for it.
Mayor King.
Here.
Mayor Person Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Ben.
Here.
Councilmember Broadway.
Here.
Councilmember Goodman.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Ray.
Here.
Thank you. Next, we have our minutes for approval for our work session and regular meeting of July 27.
Move to a dot. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any corrections, additions, or additional comments? Hear none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, we're saying aye. Aye. Close. Minutes approved. Moving to public comment period. We set this time aside for anyone who would like to address the council. You have up to three minutes on the subject of your choosing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? No one, so we'll close the public hearing. I'm sorry, public comment period. And we will go to our presentations. And we do have Wages Day proclamation. Is there anyone in the orders from wages? Thank you for coming. I'll have a proclamation. I'll read it and then I'll present you a copy. Proclamation, Wages Day. Whereas during the State of the Union address on January 8th, 1964, President Lyndon B. Johnson declared unconditional war on poverty, leading Congress to pass the Economic Opportunity Act. And whereas, in response to the Economic Opportunity Act, the Wayne Action Group for Economic Sovereignty Incorporated, WAGES, was founded as a community action agency dedicated to mobilizing resources to combat poverty. And whereas WAGES was chartered by a resolution of the Wayne County Commissioners in 1965, and the agency held its first Board of Directors meeting on November 19th, 1965, it was at this meeting that officers were elected, a constitution was adopted, and bylaws. And WAGES began to identify programs and services needed in the community. And whereas, in the earliest program, were Neighborhood Youth Corpse and Head Start. And since the creation of WAGES, there have been many programs to assist citizens of Goldsboro and Wayne County. And whereas current WAGES programs include CSBG Self-Sufficiency Project, Head Start, Early Head Start, Wayne County First Steps, Weatherization Assistant Programs, Heating and Appliance Repair and Replacement Programs, Foster Grandparents Program, Senior Companions Program, Nutrition Programs for the elderly with Congregate Services, and Meals on Wheels. And whereas Wayne Action Group for Economic Sovereignty celebrates 50 years of service and success by impacting over 2,090 individuals in the community with 198 dedicated employees. Now therefore, Alfonso King, mayor of the city of Goldsboro, do hereby proclaim October 17th, 1950, as Wages Day in Goldsboro, North Carolina, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact that the Wayne Action Group for Economic Sovereignty, WAGES, had made to the city of Goldsboro. Ladies, it's my honor to present you a plaque. And to thank you on behalf of all the library citizens for the tremendous work you've done. WAGES, you guys are absolutely awesome. I didn't know we had that many employees. Would you like to make a contribution, the both of you?
On behalf of the WAGES Board of Directors, your Presidents, Cheryl H. Edwards and Mrs. Kamata Johnson, who is heading the 50th anniversary celebration, we thank you on behalf of the city. And we thank you on behalf of our 198 employees and our Board of Directors. And we hope to see you at our event on October 16th at 6:00 PM at the Wayne Center. Thank you.
Mrs. Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Dr. Ray is absent because she's out of town, and she offers her apologies. And again, thank you for your continued support for WAGES in the future. Thank you.
And in our last discussion of our wages, what appealed to, I believe, all of us unanimously, was the Meals on Wheels program for seniors, and that really caught our ear, that one thing, and other things, of course.
I'm glad that caught your ear, because all of them are significant. They serve from children, babies, up until senior citizens from birth to death.
And Meals on Wheels needs more participants to help deliver the meals.
We do, we need volunteers.
They're running real low right now because of people who have died and people who are getting to the point where they can't deliver them anymore. So I make a public appeal for, you know, you always need volunteers.
Absolutely.
Thank you. In all of our programs, we always seek volunteers, not only the Meals on Wheels, but the Senior Companions, Foster Grandparents. They serve children and adults and people who are homebound and in their home, and it is a lifesaver for someone who has an Alzheimer family member or someone with other kinds of illnesses. And these companions go in the home and they serve them, and it makes the difference in all the world to them. So I thank you for your appeals for volunteers, we need them.
Well, you know, a lot of times when you're delivering Meals on Wheels, you see a caregiver from WAGES there helping them also. So I can see the need for all of them.
We had two instances of someone who, a Meals on Wheels, the homebound, the concrete meals and the homebound. And we had, on occasion recently, two elderly people had fallen. One had to be hospitalized, and the other one just needed someone to get them up off the floor. But that person coming into that home each day, they could have laid there for days if no one had not been coming in. So it's a lifesaver.
Mm-hmm. It's...
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation. It's Come Hang With Us. I met these young people here a few days ago, and they've got some great ideas. Yes.
How's everybody doing?
How are you?
Great, great. If you guys would remember, first, I have a booklet spread about it.
Yeah?
Sure.
I didn't, I wasn't prepared for seven years. Those little hands, I'll check that. Members.
Thank you. I see you on time.
Thank you, sir.
That's odd, Joe. That's, that's odd.
Well, first, we'd like to thank you guys for the opportunity to be able to stand before you. My name is James Williams. I'm the CEO and founder of Come Hang With Us Corporation. Now, we know that there has been a lot of complaints about our youth in the community. Our youth are really struggling for help. They're finding ways to live a negative life more so than a positive life. So what our organization is about, positivity in the community. We know that it's much needed in the city of Goldsboro. All of us want to see Goldsboro stand out and be a better community. But I believe all of us need to work together in order to make that community, to make our community a better community. I'm 33-years-old. I was born in New Jersey. However, I moved to Goldsboro when I was about 10-years-old. I graduated from Goldsboro High School, went off and served in the military. I served in the Marine Corps. After Marine Corps, I went to school. I went to college. However, I came back to Goldsboro, and one of the things that I saw in Goldsboro was a lot of the same situations, same issues that I dealt with when I was going through school in Goldsboro. And when I noticed that, it made me immediately want to leave. I left and I said, I can't come back to Goldsboro because it's not, it's no place for opportunities here. Then I, then I went off and, this is my wife, you guys, her name's Crystal Williams. She put me away from Goldsboro. And when I left from Goldsboro, I had an opportunity to see new things, brighter things. Even in the military, I saw a lot of things, but I saw a need in Goldsboro. So I told my wife, I said, we need to go back to Goldsboro, because I always had a passion for our youth in the community. So immediately, I came back to Goldsboro, and I formed the organization called Come Hang With Us Corporation. Behind me are members of the organization, and they also support and love what we're doing in the community. So we pulled together, and our organization is growing. And what we see tonight, you guys, is just support. Just hear us out, and if you can, support us in any way possible. Get our name out there, just for people to know a little about us. Tonight, we provide you guys with a package, just basically have a little bit about our organization and what we're doing in the community. We had the opportunity to sit down with Mayor King and share some of our goals and what our organization is about. However, he shared with us that he likes what we're doing, and allow us to come before the board to be able to speak with you guys on what we're doing. Each one of our, each one of our members will have a little to say about what we're doing.
Could you, excuse me, could you introduce, I know you three, but the two, could you have each of you introduce yourselves, please, for us? This is, this is the leader right here. She's the, she's the overseer.
Well, my name's Rebecca Bell. And when I met Mr. James, we were saying, coming on, you know, I liked the program, and I enjoy so far being a public speaker. Rebecca Bell.
I'm Crystal Peacock Williams. I'm James Williams' wife.
And the two ladies in the...
I'm Kimberly Floyd.
I'm Joey Patterson.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll pass it over. Crystal Williams will share with us a little about our programs. If you guys look in your package, there's a booklet in there. It just explains a little bit about other programs that we have.
Okay. Hello, I'm Crystal Peacock Williams. I'm a member of Come Hang With Us Corporation. I would like to go over with you the programs that we have to offer located in your booklet. In the booklet, you can see that we have community programs listed with a brief description. One of our programs is Live a Little Longer. This program teaches seniors 55 and up healthier living tips and finding new and safer ways to stay active in the community for a long and healthy life. Touched by an Angel, Massage Therapy by Licensed NC Massage and Bodywork Therapists that caters to women's health and teens starting at age 12 with parental permission. Pick a Prize, mentoring program for adolescents allowing mentors and mentees to be placed together based upon their compatibility. Each mentor would interact with one mentee, giving the mentee the opportunity to have a role model that can better understand their needs, concerns, and to help find solutions to everyday problems that they may encounter. Open Minders, this is a group of individuals that gives advice to the people of our community who need someone to listen to their problems. They believe in sharing wisdom and knowledge with these in need of an ear. My Sister's Keeper, a program that was designed for all women of any age to come together to help deal with everyday female issues that may arise. This program gives women a chance to bond and gain support from their sisterhood. Fathers of Hope, this program was designed to help men to become better individuals, fathers, husbands, role models, and community leaders, showing men how to take their places with their families. My Child Needs a Hand, working with local businesses to provide vouchers for the less fortunate in the community, shoes, clothes, hairstyles, haircuts, school supplies, hygiene products, and many more. Ready to Learn, this program was designed to help those who are in need of some assistance with their learning abilities. We will provide classes and set appointments to help tutor these individuals. By Our Hands, this program was designed to support the community by doing volunteer labor services such as community trash cleanup, yard work, assisting the elderly, and et cetera. Life, which stands for Life Love is for Everyone. The Life Program was designed to spread love and awareness in the community by doing acts of kindness that individual community participations. One Can Can Feed a Man, the community donating a can to the food drive to help support a monthly to bimonthly feeding program, help rebuild the food pantries in our local community organizations. Each one of our programs have volunteer hour requirements that will be given a certificate upon completion. Our community programs will have separate booklets/pamphlets with in-depth detail of the program. One of our examples is our Life Program. Our Life Program already has a brochure booklet, and it just shows everything that Life has to offer. After completing 80 hours, you will receive a certificate of completion to show that you have put forth the effort, done what you needed to do to realize that Life is important. Then we have listed our extracurricular activities listed for Come Hang With Us Corporation for our youth. Each program will have volunteers that have a passion for these activities. Our extracurricular activities are located in your booklets. There's Anointed with Authority, it's our male gospel step team. Bombshells, female step team. Forever Yours, spiritual dance team. Finnish Works, our dramatic arts. Drop That Beat, hip-hop dance team. Picture Perfect, Young and Boys Modeling, Young Boys and Girls Modeling. Our Community Youth Choir, Sports and Cheerleading, and Say No More, our mom team. All extracurricular activities are currently in play, and some are preparing for our annual talent showcase this December. Thank you for allowing me to give you the description of our programs that we have to offer. We are always looking for new ideas and programs that we can offer to our youth and community.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Very well done. Thank you. Very well done. Thank you.
So you're, sweetens, you're partnering with other people that, let's see, one part of it says that, well, our children have paid gifts of words, song, athleticism, or dance, to name a few. Do you partner with others who...
Yes, we are. I'm actually on the board at Denver Academy Charter Schools. I'm one of their board members. I've partnered with them, and we provided such as the extracurricular activities. Those, we know that our youth have a lot of talents and gifts in the community, but they don't know where to use them at. So what our organization does is allow them to come and be a part of us. That way, they can express those gifts, because in December, every year, we have our annual talent showcase, and we take those same children out of the community that never got a chance to express their gifts and their talents, and we allow them to express it among the community. It's a free event for everyone to come. We pass out plenty of flyers. Last year, we, last year was our very first one. I have a few of these, that's my first. This was our very first one, and we reached over our capacity. We had, we were allowed to have 300 people there for the space that we have, but we had well over 300 people to show up. They really loved it, and they're asking for it again this year. So we will have our 2015 annual talent showcase.
Do y'all have an office, or where do you work out of?
Currently, we have office space located on Madison Avenue, 620 Madison Avenue. However, we are, we are trying to keep our doors open, and that way, we can provide more for the community. However, like I said, we've only been existing one year, and we're trying to get the word out to the community.
Even if it was one year, that was one of my questions.
Yes.
One year. And where do you get, where do you get your audience and your target kids from? How do you get your...
We just reach out to them. We, Facebook, social media, and such as. However, we know a lot of people in the community, so the words pass out quickly. And also, we pass out plenty of flyers, plenty of brochures and things such as.
And your funding so far is just basically donations?
Donations. So we're definitely needing supporters. We have fundraisers, as many as we can get out into the public, yes.
I was really impressed with these young people. They have not only shown you, they have documented what they've done, and to me, that speaks volumes.
Thank you.
You're in it for the long haul, and I'd like our community, our citizens throughout this area to know what you're doing and to assist you if at all possible. I know I'm impressed with what you're doing, and I'll do all I can to help you.
Thank you.
Just lots of love, and keep pushing.
Thank you, sir.
Keep pushing.
My last name is Williams.
My last name is Williams, and your last name is Williams, too, sir.
Give them Goldsboro.
Yes, sir.
So I'm in Goldsboro.
All right. All right, we just have a few more there, very brief. She spoke most of it.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Floyd again, and I just want to talk a little bit about the volunteers. As you were saying, it's very important to have volunteers because they are the backbone for most nonprofits. And whether you know or not, North Carolina, at the end of 2013, was number 28 nationally with the volunteer rate. They had over 1.97 million volunteers doing over 200,000, I'm sorry, 200 million hours per year. Even though that sounds good, it's declining, and the reason it's declining is because a lot of volunteers aren't feeling appreciated, so it's hard to get people to come back. So what Come Hang With Us wants to do is basically reiterate the reasons to why people are backing out of volunteering. A lot of them are not feeling appreciated, and it's little things that count, maybe an award ceremony to give a certificate, as we're going to do. And one of the main people, the main people that's actually volunteer are our youth. And once they start at an early age, most of them will continue throughout adulthood. So what Come Hang With Me wants to do is basically reach out to area high schools. And a lot of teenagers, my son was one, that needed to find somewhere to do community service, not only for college scholarships, but he needed those community service hours for acceptance into either university. So what we want to do is reach out and give those students a chance to come and work with us to work out in the community, and that way, they can give back as well as get what they need for college. So, thank you.
Great point. Thank you, Karen.
Very convincing.
Thank you.
How you doing? I'm Joey Patterson, and I'm going to briefly explain the importance of funding for our organization. Us being a nonprofit organization, we have to come up with unique and creative ways to generate money. So through this, throughout these summer months, we have hosted a lot of fundraisers like community movie night, yard sales, teen dances, and ultimate game day, just to name a few. To promote awareness to our organization, we host an annual, like he said, talent show every year in December. And last year's talent show, we were over capacity. And it is a free event for the public, but all the toy, every child that came that night left with toys and a gift bag, and that was all through donations. Everyone in attendance had snacks and drinks, and that was all through donations. So as you can see, we greatly appreciate donations. We need that to keep our organization going.
Oh, yeah.
And we try to host as many family events and fundraisers as possible, and we would like, we are asking you for your support, and all the information is enclosed in your packet.
Thank you. Thank you, Joey.
And again, I'm Rebecca Bell, and just to kind of sum it all up, I can honestly say, because I'm a head start teacher, so I do understand the need of family, family involvement. I understand the pressure and the stress that a lot of these families face. And what Come Hang With Us has done, and is still doing, is begin to get families involved. And this takes off a lot of stress for families and homes that need like a safe haven, they can drop the kids off at. Come hang with us. Even if they got issues that they may need to deal with, they can come with, come hang with us. So the program is actual what that name says, Come Hang With Us. And what they do is they start, they come, give you ideals, or they get involved, and if they don't have the idea, what I love about it, if they don't have the program, they can also assist them and send them to resources that can do what maybe they can't do. So as a city nutshell, it's a program that's going to make family well-rounded, help, you know, detouring some of the stress that's going on in Goldsboro. Because like you said, I too, when I moved back to Goldsboro, and I started seeing all the different things that were happening, those negative, I wanted to run away. But I realized, everybody can't run away, you know? Somebody got something, take a stay and say, hey, we're here, and we're here to stay. So this is what Come Hang With Us has done, and my family, my little ones went out, my grandbabies, they love it. So now I'm seeing people in the community that's been there, saying, hey, when they gonna open them doors again? When can I drop my child? There's family, there's moms, that's coming to me just recently on Saturday, saying, when they gonna open the doors again? So we know it's a well-needed program. The funding is well-needed, so if anybody, you guys can come with any way that they can get extra funding, I think Mr. James would greatly appreciate it. He is an awesome young man. And what you guys see is what you get, an awesome, great bunch of young people. Try and do some positive in the city of Goldsboro. Thank you.
Thank you. You've convinced me, I'll guarantee it.
Thank you again.
I want to come hang with you.
Come hang with us. Bring some praise.
I'll do that.
Thank you, guys.
We now have presentation, Wayne County Citizens for Better Schools. This is Charles Wright here, here he is.
Mr. Charles.
Wayne County citizens for better schools come before you tonight for our second and final request for inclusion in the P4 multi-sports complex agreement between Seymour Johnson Air Force Base and the city of Goldsboro. This complex prominently illustrated and described as eight lighted artificial turf soccer fields, each measuring 228 feet by 356 feet, occupying 62.35 acres or 2,708,941 square feet with an estimated final cost of $12 million. Members of our organization have received multiple positive comments via social media, phone calls, and personal contact regarding our presentation on September 21st requesting inclusion. However, based on news media accounts, members of our city council and city government may not have. We would like to request, restate our request again to you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city councilmembers, city administration, and our television and print media audience, so that all of us are on the same page. The Goldsboro Tourism Council, consisting of six voting members, three from the hotel industry, and three appointed by the city, initiated a $12 million project to use hotel occupancy taxes to build and finance an eight-lighted artificial turf soccer field complex. Their rationale for using these taxes were to recruit soccer tournaments to Goldsboro, increasing tourism in the Goldsboro area. increasing tourism in the Goldsboro area. Obviously, no one denies soccer tournaments can help fill hotels, motels, restaurants, and boost revenue in our city and county. However, we also stated that 13 other AAU teen sports tournaments could likewise help fill hotels, motels, restaurants, and boost our local economy. We respectfully request the addition of two building structures on empty available space to accommodate these 13 other indoor sports tournaments. The rules regarding the usage of the indoor sports facility will be the same rules regarding soccer field usage. Simply, simply put, this will not be a community recreation center where kids just drop in, but for team practice and team tournaments, the same as soccer fields, team practice and team tournaments. In addition, all of us should embrace inclusion and want to include as many teen sports teams that exist or may be created, because participation in teen sports help our youth build character, self-esteem, self-discipline, team reliance, and other positive traits and skills critical for their physical and psychological development. The comments reportedly made to news media about the additional recreation plans the city has specifically as it rate, as it relates to the WA Foster Center and the Herman Park Center are laudatory. These plans are part of the $44 million Parks and Recreation Facility Master Plan, and its completion would immensely help the 8,400 children under the age of 18 that Mayor Pro Temp Allen helped identify. However, these planned neighborhood recreation facilities have nothing to do with our requests. The city, with partnership of Seymour Johnson, has proposed a crown jewel, a huge 63-acre tournament venue for primarily soccer that provides a safe, well-lighted environment, easily accessible to Highway 70, close to motels, restaurants, and shopping, enabling Goldsboro to show off its best jewelry while working to polish the other. This will help ensure our visitors will want to visit Goldsboro again. Wayne County for Better Schools are requesting inclusion for indoor teen tournaments at this crown jewel complex. We request the addition of two buildings that can be semi-portable modular sports complex structures that would meet city code requirements, could be moved if necessary in the future, and could cost less than one-sixth of the $12 million price for the soccer complex. We're requesting these buildings be written into the contract now. Tomorrow is not promised, and a slight delay will not dull the sparkle of this proposed crown jewel sports complex. Please help the thousands of youth participants, family members, supporters, and spectators make this request inclusion, requested inclusion happen today. And can I just show you another slide I have? This one is, is a part of your package. This is the language actually come right off the city website that Mr. Assistant Manager Randy Gruffy put on the city website. It is the crown jewel of Goldsboro Parks and Recreation Committee. Tournaments, events will plan that will help stimulate the economy. Convenient location, that location is very convenient, it's safe, illuminated, and it has playing facilities. And few complexes east of 95 will be like this. In fact, this complex, once completed as designed, will rival the complex up at Cary. So, we would actually have more lighted fields than Cary, which is good, because Cary gets $300,000 for three years just for naming rights. So, hopefully, Goldsboro may be able to get $300,000 for three years for naming rights. Inclusion of this addition would consist of everything that's above, one to three million dollars, only 75,000 square feet. And that 75,000 square feet, Mr. Mayor and City Councilman, represents only 2.7% of the total square feet that we talking about. So, to have this crown jewel of an indoor sports complex would only require 2.7% of that total acreage available, and it's also available. And as we stated before, with that indoor complex, and let me really emphasize this, we are not saying that these sports can't be played somewhere else in a community recreation center. We saying these poor, these sports recognized can have tournaments, tournaments, and team practice, tournaments. And when you have, a city has a tournament, they don't necessarily want to take them all over the certain parts of the city. If you bringing in hundreds of people for a tournament, you want to put them in a place like the multi-sports complex is now, near hotels, near shopping, near bright lights. You don't want to send them down to some other at night and they end up on the wrong street. And enough said on that. We want a tournament. So, by having an indoor complex, all these are AAU sanctioned sports that have tournaments, baton, twirling, basketball, cheerleading, dance, gymnastics, jump rope, martial arts, has four different types of martial arts just under martial arts. Power, powerlifting, weightlifting, trampoline, tumbling, volleyball, wrestling, table tennis, and indoor soccer, which is futsal, which is played by young kids, is not an AAU sport, but they do have their own league. So, we just want to emphasize what we are asking for is inclusion in a tournament venue. And it may not have been the ideal of the city, but what you are building out at Seymour Johnson is a huge tournament venue where tournaments. And it's that inclusion that we asking for. And can we move to the next? The next slide just shows the ideal of how big a soccer field is. Now, a lot of you might seen the diagrams, but that is a regulation soccer field. Now, put out the stadium, because that stadium holds 40, 45,000 people. So, forget about the stadium. I just want you to concentrate on, that's the tournament-sized soccer field there. So, I just want people to get an idea of how much space. We talking about eight of those right in town. Okay, next slide. This is something that came up because of what we seen in the paper about a permanent building cannot be on a structure that's, we only have a 20-year lease, and I think it was stated that a building has a term life of 60 to 80 years, and we know that because a WA Foster is 78 years. So, we know that, but we didn't know that at the time that we made a proposal. So, what we've done is we searched the internet, and we came up with about six nice companies that build indoor portable or semi-modular portable buildings. And the good thing about what you looking at there, the blue dome, is that it can go up and stay up for 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, meet all city code requirements, heating, air conditioning, and at the end of 10, 15, 20 years, it can come down and be placed somewhere else. So, next picture we have, that's one, I particularly like that one. And these are all in cold, cold states. So, when you look at it, don't think, oh, it won't work here in North Carolina. Some of these are in Michigan, Chicago, where it's a lot colder, windier. Can we show the next? That's it? Okay, in your, in your packet, you have about three or four other instances of indoor complex. Before I sit down, I'd just like to say, we don't want to keep coming back tit-for-tat and something is said, and, but what we want to do tonight is really ask what it will take to get the council to agree with us that inclusion is a good thing. This indoor sports complex is good for all the kids in the city, and it's a good thing to do it now. We, we are prepared to say that we have support of this outside of Goldsboro. We are prepared to say that if you want to invite one of these companies that make these portable structures to actually come here and give you a presentation, one or two of them may be willing to do that. If you want us to say there may be some federal funding involved, and it may be some private funding involved, we can say that. So, if you want us to rent a van and, and a 15-passenger van and put you all in a van and take you to visit a location where one of these indoor facilities are, we willing to do that. So, you tell us what we need to do to make this work, because we want to hear results from all of you, including our city managers, what it's going to take to make this work. We want to hear something that takes to make this work, not reasons why it can't work, but reasons why it can work. And at that point, I, and as always, I always encourage any city councilor, if you have any questions, please ask them. So, so we can, you know, answer, try to answer a question so you know exactly what Wayne County Citizens for Better Schools is requesting. There's no gray areas, there's no ambiguity. We want this to be clear, we want to be upfront with you, we want to be able to partner with you, but we want to make this something that is unanimously find approval among all the city council.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to say, it's very, very appealing to me as a councilman, just one, and I do hope that, I wish there was a way that we can get there. And I'm, I'm in support of it, but the question I think has been, how do we get there without having to pay super normal tax bills? That's what the question is.
Well, I'll say this, Mr. Wright, I've said all along, ever since you brought this presentation to the council, it's a, I thought it was a great, great idea, I've been in support of it, and I really think that we should think long and hard and try to figure out a way. There is something to be said about inclusion, and we need to think long and hard in terms of trying to make this work, because I think it will make our community better.
Well, Councilman Williams, thank you, Councilman Head. All I can say is, if we, if we work for the premise, or at least our tourism committee worked for the premise, that soccer alone would be enough money coming in in revenue in hotel tax, would build a 12 or six initially million, up to a 12 million complex. Why, why can't we use that same rationale and say with all those other 14 sports won't make enough money to build a complex that's one-sixth of the cost of the 12 million? So, if those 14 sports tournaments can't make three million, but one soc, soccer tournament can make 12 million, that, I, I see a question. But the whole rationale behind this of funding, if I'm not mistaken, is the tourism, the hotel occupancy tax is going to pay for the structure of this multi-sports complex and its operation. So, that was the basis from which the Wayne County citizens were saying, if occupancy tax can pay for tournaments just for one sport, wow, if we had 14 other sports under a roof that had tournaments, then we have people coming in to Goldsboro almost every week for some type of tournament, and that will in turn pay for itself. I mean, am I making sense with that, what I'm saying? And all I'm saying is, if the occupancy tax can pay for 12 million, then why can't the occupancy tax pay for another three more million?
Any more comments? I don't have any questions from the council.
Okay.
You're passionate about this, we understand it. There's a lot to be unpacked, but we, we will take a look at it and see what we can do.
And just let me add, it's an assumption that by going in and doing something with the agreement, that that can delay. We have assurances that that would not be the case. If the city council choose to want to go in and renegotiate or modify this P4 complex, it may not, it not only may lengthen, but it may shorten the process. And just keep that in mind, because it's a lot of other...
We've got some more work to do.
Okay.
We'll do it.
There's some people in Washington that, that is willing to help, but people in Washington can't help unless it's asked. And, but it needs to be asked by the mayor and the city council, not by the Wayne County Citizens for Better Schools. But help is there, trust me on that, but you need to ask, but it's there.
Help is, help is there, huh?
Help is there.
Oh, okay, we'll, we'll talk.
You should know, you should know, Mr. Mayor.
We, we appreciate you, we'll talk.
All right.
Okay, moving right along, we have no item for public hearing, consent agenda?
Mayor, councilor, your consent agenda, we have discussed items E through R. Again, your consent agenda consisted of items E through R.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion on the second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion or comment before we vote? Here, non, we'll have a roll call, though, please.
Mayor King?
Yes.
Mayor President Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Hedy?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Lawway?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Bittner?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Anka?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. We do have one item for...
We took it off the agenda.
We took it off the agenda. We had one item, but we did take it off the agenda. Okay. City managers report.
Mayor, a couple of things I'd like to share with you tonight. One, I do, with all the weather-related events across our, I guess, south of us a little bit in our state of South Carolina, I do want to thank our staff for being ready. It wasn't as bad in Goldsboro as it was in some areas, but we still had a lot of staff preparing and studying and getting our, our city ready, should we have had the amount of flooding that they had in other areas. And I do want to thank them and then at least in our hearts and minds to the other communities that have been affected so badly. The F-86 aircraft, we've talked about moving it for the last maybe several weeks. Our contractor is in town to move it. He had hoped to move it Saturday, and we were going to make a little bigger event of it. At this point, we've talked with Seymour Johnson Air Force personnel, we believe we will move it across the fence Tuesday morning, October 6th. We're going to wait for school to start, and then about 8:30, we're going to start at Piedmont Airlines Road and bring it down Ash Street. So, the contractor tells us he'll move about 10 miles an hour, so that'll be a pretty quick movement along Ash Street. But for those that are able to pay attention to that, sometime after 8:30 Tuesday morning, October 6th, the aircraft will move westward on Ash Street to the traffic circle at Center Nash. We erected a pole there, and the contractor should have the aircraft up, I believe, by the end of the week. So, I hope it'll look different and be in its place for maybe the next 20 years. And we have talked to, or reached out to the principals at Greenwood and Meadow Lane. Principal at Greenwood was excited and hopes to have their students out, and I hope the folks at Meadow Lane will have their students out as well. But just so you know, that's moving. It may be inconvenient, but it doesn't happen often, and we'd ask the community to bear with us in that movement of that aircraft on Tuesday. Our website, we have put out a new website, I asked the community to take a look at that. We put it out a week ago, it's still the same address of goldsboronc.gov. We would appreciate any feedback on that, things that we can adjust, we will, but it is meant to be easier access, and so if you're used to where it's always been, it's probably moved. But I think we've had a lot of staff involved and appreciate their time and effort into putting that out, and would ask for those in the community to have any comments, good or bad, we'd be happy to hear those. And then we'll just remind folks of the Taste of Wayne that is coming downtown Saturday, October 10th, from 11:00 to 1:00, will be in our downtown, and it's, in the past year has been a good community event. We'll come out for that Saturday, October 10th. Mayor, that's all I have.
Mr. Attorney?
No reports, Mayor.
Mayor and council input? Is there anyone here from Breaking the Silence on Domestic Violence? Anyone represent that organization here? Okay, I do have a proclamation that I'd like to read, at least some of it. Proclamation... Proclamation, North Carolina Breaking the Silence on Domestic Violence Day. Whereas in recognition of National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and whereas Mothers on a Mission domestic violence organization is committed to breaking the silence on domestic violence in the state of North Carolina. And whereas between January two thousand nine and December twenty fourteen, there were four hundred and eleven domestic violent homicides in the state of North Carolina. And whereas ninety-five of those domestic homicides were under the age of thirty-five years, and out of ninety-five homicide victims under the age of twenty-five years, twenty-nine were under the age of sixteen. Whereas out of the four hundred and eleven homicide victims, thirty-four were over the age of sixty, and one hundred of those homicides resulted in murder or suicide. You see what the idea is. We have an awful lot of statistics here, and I won't go through all of it, but I'll go to the next. One hundred and twenty-eight of the victims were murdered by boyfriend, girlfriend. Twenty-three of the victims were murdered by exes of their current girlfriend, boyfriend. So you see, this sort of covers the waterfront. North Carolina endured an average of sixty-eight point six domestic violence homicides each year for the past six years. And whereas Mothers on a Mission domestic violence organization will dedicate Saturday, Saturday, October thirty-first, twenty fifteen, on breaking the silence of domestic violence in our state by setting up educational workshops, booths, and distribute informative information to the public and radio and television interviews. Now therefore, I, Alfonso King, Mayor of the city of Goldsboro, do hereby proclaim Saturday, October thirty-first, twenty fifteen, as North Carolina breaking the silence on Domestic Violence Day in Goldsboro, North Carolina. This is something that, when I read that, the statistics were just absolutely frightening, and any of us in here could be a victim. So it's something that we have an organization who's working. I was hoping that some of them would be here, but they're not, but they are working. So please pay attention and do what we can to work with the group and prevent domestic violence. Halloween proclamation, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, would you read that one?
Yeah, I got that. I think the reason that the mayor asked me to do this, he knows I love some candy. And I remember, all my children are now too old to go trick-or-treating anymore, but I remember in their younger days, as a father, I was concerned about their welfare, and I used to help them check on their candy every time they came home. And I'm sure there's some parents in the audience that probably understand that. But it's all about, we want them to be safe. So we're going to read safety first on Halloween. Whereas it is the desire and responsibility of the city council to promote the safety and welfare of the citizens of the city of Goldsboro, whereas the city council is concerned that our young citizens participate in traditional Halloween trick-or-treat activities in a safe and orderly manner, whereas the city council feels that the best method for promoting a safe and orderly Halloween is through a proclamation from the mayor setting forth guidelines for these activities. Now therefore, I, Alfonso King, Mayor of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim, safety first on Halloween, and encourage all citizens of Goldsboro to promote and observe the following safety guidelines. Number one, parents are asked to supervise the Halloween trick-or-treat activities of their children, and to ensure that trick-or-treat activities are limited to children under the age of sixteen years. Trick-or-treat hours will be observed from six PM until eight PM on Saturday, October thirty-first. Trick-or-treat activities should be confined to the youngsters in the neighborhood. Residents who wish to participate in trick-or-treat are asked to leave a porch light or outdoor light on during these hours. Parents are asked to explain to children that homes with no outdoor lights are not participating in trick-or-treat, and that these homes should be passed up during these activities. These guidelines are set forth in the hope that all citizens of Goldsboro enjoy a safe, happy, and orderly Halloween. I have set my seal, and affix this seal, on city of Goldsboro, the fifth day of October two thousand fifteen.
Thank you. Halloween's a great time. When I was younger, and my kids were young, and we had young kids in our neighborhood, I had more fun than they did because I would always dress up in my costume, and I would find a different way every year to scare the heck out of them, and I did that. But now that my kids have grown and gone, and all my neighbors' kids have grown and gone, it's no fun on our street. But anyway, we have a few there, hopefully they will participate. There are an awful lot of kids, though, and Halloween's a great time. We need to make sure that they're safe, make sure they're to safe. Okay, anything else, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Sure.
Michael?
No comments, sir.
No comments, sir.
No comments.
Wow.
Mr. Mayor?
You still have that proclamation?
No, that one, yeah, that one's been, it's over. Reverend?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, based on the crime and the things, unfortunate things that are happening to our youth in she goes borough and surrounding areas, and it's taking a toll on them. And I am extremely complimentary of both Wayne County Citizens for Better Schools and Come Hang With Us. Those two organizations, programs, the requests being made, I think it would be highly beneficial for our youth to help, you know, eliminate some of these problems, this luring our young people into death traps. A lot of them going on the deep end, it's appalling, and I hope that we can in some way address these concerns in a positive manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
No comments, sir.
Would you comment on the proclamation that wasn't QSA?
I can do that, I'm sorry, I forgot. I did go to this activity, it's the QSA Foundation, and I went there to read part of the proclamation, and I was amazed. They filled up Herman Park Center, and the people that filled up Herman Park Center came from all over. The DMV was there, the Red Cross was there, Salvation Army was there, a lot of our veterans group, and we got over seventy-five, maybe almost a hundred homeless veterans, not only from Goldsboro, but from Kinston and from Wilson. We had a group from Wilson, and they filled it up, and they brought for those people winter clothes. I saw guys filling up what I call duffel bags. It was the old green overseas duffel bag. They had a ton of those, they had work boots for them, they had those green Air Force parkas that we could never steal in the Marine Corps. They would give it...
I thought the Marines could steal anything they wanted to steal.
But they were the good ones with the wolf fur around them, and they were giving those out, they were giving haircuts. DMV was there with ID cards. Salvation Army was there, they were taking, there were people doing blood pressure tests. I was amazed. I didn't even know this organization existed.
I didn't.
And they were there, and the veterans groups were amazing. But what really struck me is how many homeless veterans we have in Wayne County, Wilson County.
I am familiar with that.
And in Lenora County. It's amazing. They brought them in by truckloads, and these people did a great job. And I didn't know that existed, and it's something for all of us to think about, and there's people hurting that we don't even know.
I got the proclamation late, and this event already happened. That's why I, Bill was there, and I'd like him, I wanted him to explain so that you would know what it's all about. You?
No comment.
Reverend Anio? Jean? No comment. Okay, there's nothing further to come before this, aren't we? Stand by.